Okay, folks, the webcast is on, so I'm going to go ahead and begin. Good afternoon, everybody. My name's Jason Smith. I'm the supervisor of the Pharmaceutical and Sharps Unit. You're at the public hearing for the proposed regulations for SB 212, the Pharmaceutical and Sharps Waste Stewardship Act. I'll be the facilitator today, and before we begin, I'll start with a few housekeeping announcements. First of all, in the unlikely event of a fire alarm, we will exit this room through those doors, down the stairs, across the street to Cesar Chavez Park. So please follow us so we can get you out there safely. If you're not familiar with the building, there's restrooms out these doors to the left, and then another left. There's also a drinking fountain there. And down the stairs, there's a cafeteria if you need coffee or snacks. I'm not sure how long we'll be here today, but if you need to step out and get a coffee or something, or take an urgent phone call, please do so out there. This hearing is being recorded, and I want to thank the court reporter in advance for producing a hearing transcript, which will be made available as part of the rulemaking file. If you wish to provide a comment today, we ask you, please speak clearly, and provide both your name and affiliation, and wait for a microphone to reach you. We will have microphone runners as well. And also, we have the webcast attendees, so we want to make sure they can hear you as well. But with that, let's get started. Today marks the final opportunity to provide comments on the proposed regulations for SB 212 as part of the initial 45-day formal comment period. We are here today primarily in a listening mode and to receive your input as part of the formal process. We will not be holding discussions on comments received. I want to acknowledge and thank all of you who have shared feedback already with us during the course of informal rulemaking as well as providing comments during the 45-day comment period. We have received a lot of information and helpful suggestions today. We also anticipate holding a 15-day comment period after we review and evaluate all the comments received to date and determine any necessary edits. We'll keep you informed about our timeline via the rulemaking webpage and the listserv. If you have comments or suggested edits to the proposed regulatory text, we would like to receive those today so they can be considered. This can be done by providing verbal comments, which will be captured by the court reporter, who will generate a transcript that we will use to respond to the comments. Written comments will also be accepted today by either providing them to us. If you brought hard copies, we have a basket in the back. Or if you want to submit them electronically and you're attending via webinar, you can send them to pharmasharps@calrecycle.ca.gov before the end of the hearing. Joyce here will be monitoring our inbox so that we can make sure logistical questions get answered, and comments regarding the proposed regulations will be added to the rulemaking record. And as a reminder, we do post comments for the public to review on CalRecycle's website. Now, I'd just like to introduce the team who's been working on implementing the law's requirements and developing the proposed regulations. Mary Lee Kalindris is one of my staff, as well as Michael Turgeon, Julie Nguyen, Mary Curry. We also have the EPR manager Cynthia Dunn to my left, our branch chief Clark Williams, our deputy of enforcement Mark DeBee, and our chief counsel Elliot Block. With that, I'd like to turn it over to Mary Lee, who will provide a brief overview of where we are in the rulemaking process and walk us through the proposed text. And then we'll open it up to comments, and I'll just try to keep a queue, moderate, and make sure everybody has a chance to provide comment on the proposed text.
Thank you, Jason, and thank you all for coming out to the CalEPA building this beautiful afternoon. I have had the pleasure of meeting many of you, and I'm looking forward to hearing your comments. First, I am going to give a little background about what we have done so far. In January and February 2019, we held our first two public workshops, where we solicited stakeholder input and facilitated dialogue on potential regulatory concepts. We then developed informal draft regulatory text and held informal public workshops in May and June to discuss the potential language. We accepted comments on the informal draft text through July 1st. We then incorporated feedback and developed the proposed regulations, which we presented for director approval at the monthly CalRecycle Public Meeting in October and which was subsequently approved in November. We also developed other necessary regulatory documents, such as an economic analysis of the proposed regulations, which will be submitted to the Department of Finance for review later this year. In December, we filed with the Office of Administrative Law to begin formal rulemaking, and the notice of proposed rulemaking was published on January 3, 2020, which initiated the 45-day formal comment period that concluded on February 17, 2020. Regarding next steps, we will be working on responses to the public comments and revising the regulatory texts as needed upon conclusion of today's meeting hearing. We will then hold a 15-day public comment period on the proposed edits. Our intent is for a March-through-April comment period, but depending on the comments received, it may be a bit later. And if further changes to the regulatory text are necessary, we may have subsequent public comment periods as well. We will keep you informed. Finally, the regulatory text will be approved by our director at a CalRecycle monthly public meeting before we file the final package with the Office of Administrative Law for their review and approval. We anticipate filing for approval late summer or early fall. Before we move on, Joyce, have we received any logistical questions via email? Thank you. Does anyone in the audience have any logistical questions? Okay, seeing none, now let's go ahead and shift to the proposed regulatory language. We have extra copies in the back if you would like to follow along. And for those of you on the webcast, the proposed regulations are located on our rulemaking webpage. The proposed regulations consist of 17 sections, and we will be going through the text section by section. When we reach the section that you wish to comment on, please raise your hand, state your affiliation, and comment so that it can be accurately captured in this hearing's transcript. If your comment is on a specific requirement, referencing the page and line number will be helpful. So let's go ahead and begin with the first section, 18972, Purpose. This section is intended to summarize the reason for these regulations and identify affected parties in a concise manner. Does anyone have any comments on this first section? Seeing none, we will next move to Section 18972.1. This section lists key regulatory definitions that clarify statute. Seeing that there are no comments? Oh, I'm sorry. Thank you very much. We will bring a microphone right to you.
Ah, thank you. Okay, so this is in our written comments as well. Oh, I should tell you who I am. Jason Schmelzer with Shaw Yoder &amp; Anshuie Schmelzer and Lang on behalf of the National Stewardship Action Council and the California Product Stewardship Action Council? Sorry, California Product Stewardship Council. There's too many councils. Really quick on J, provides or initiates distribution of Sharps waste container. Under 3, it says, "Other methods of providing Sharps waste container and mail-back materials is approved by the department if one or two are not reasonably feasible." And I would, so this is kind of pertaining to the requirement that a Sharps container and mail-back materials be provided at the point of sale. And I just want to clarify that in the authorizing statute, there is not a feasibility off-ramp. There is a legality off-ramp. The PRC specifically says that you have to provide the Sharps container and mail-back materials at the point of sale to the extent that it's allowable by law. The issue and the reason that that's in the bill is that when the bill was being negotiated, Sharps manufacturers were concerned that providing the container and the mail-back materials would be considered an illegal inducement under federal law. So we created an off-ramp specifically for that. But there is no feasibility off-ramp. It is really just a legality off-ramp. If they cannot, as a matter of law, do that, then there's, you know, an alternative to that. So we just wanted to make sure that it's a pretty important distinction, and that point-of-sale requirement is really critical to the convenience of the Sharps mail-back program.
Thank you for the comment. And just to help the audience, it's very helpful if we preface our comments with Page 2, Line 21, I believe is where you're commenting on. Thank you very much.
Does anyone else have any further comments on the definition section? Okay, we will move on to Section 18972.2, starting on Page 3. This section covers the criteria for determining a covered entity.
Good afternoon. My name is James Jack, and I am here on behalf of Little Drugstore Products and Convenience Valet. And I missed the first few moments of the hearing, and I just wanted to clarify. Are you accepting questions, or is it strictly comments? Comments only?
Comments only.
Okay, thank you. So, and this is also pursuant to the written comments that we had submitted. Both of our clients, I think, share concerns around what types of scenarios would potentially trigger the covered entity responsibility shifting from the manufacturer to one of the other entities that are referenced, and this is on Page 3, starting on Line 15 through 18. We know that, obviously, Senate Bill 212 created kind of a cascading list of other potential responsible parties if a manufacturer is not identified. And we would just encourage the staff to articulate clearly, potentially, in the next set of revisions to the proposed regulation, what efforts CalRecycle would have to take to identify a manufacturer for purposes of the program before that responsibility could be assigned elsewhere. Thank you.
Hey, Jason Schmelzer again on behalf of CPSC and NSAC. We actually have a very similar point. There's really no indication in the regulations about when you move up or down the list. If there's an approved plan and suddenly it's disapproved, what's the notice to the distributors, you know, retailers, et cetera, down the list? Is there going to be any sort of notification process? What are the timelines for them coming into compliance? It's really just unclear at this point how you move up or down that list, so we would echo his comments, frankly.
Thank you too, thank you very much, gentlemen, for those comments. Section 18973 is our next area. We will be discussing the process to submit documents to the department. Seeing that there are no comments for that particular section? Oh, I'm sorry about that.
Sorry about that. I didn't know if you were going through Point 1. I saw that Point 1 was next. So, my name is John Gay. I'm with the Pharmaceutical Products Stewardship Work Group, known as PPSWG. We're a membership organization with over 400 members and affiliate companies across the broad spectrum of pharmaceutical products and Sharps manufacturers. And PPSWG has established Med Project USA, which also will be testifying to develop, implement, and operate stewardship programs for unwanted drugs and Sharps. The item I want to focus on here is we're concerned that in 18973.1, proposed regulations, let me give you the page number is 17, the line is 13. The proposed regulations proposal could require the submission of updated, verified, or re-verified lists of covered products in annual reports, which is contrary to what is required by SB 212. Section 42031A2 of SB 212 requires that covered entities or stewardship organization update and submit a list of covered products to the Board of Pharmacy on or before January 15 each calendar year. The bill does not impose any new obligations on program operators during the annual reporting process, i.e., there's no obligation to prepare new, updated, or re-verified lists of covered products during that roughly two-and-a-half-month period between January 15, Board of Pharmacy submission, and the March 31 annual reporting deadline. Rather, the legislative intent was simply to, and only to, require that the same covered products list be resubmitted to the Board of Pharmacy on January 15. That was submitted on January 15 be included in the annual report submitted to CalRecycle on March 31. However, the section I noted of the proposed regulation states, without further elaboration, that the annual reports submitted to CalRecycle for a covered drug stewardship plan must include, quote, "a list of covered products," unquote. And the section, similarly, and I don't know if you want to raise it now, but there's another, a similar issue in the Sharps program. Did you want, now, or do you want to wait for that? Notting yes for now, or? Okay, we'll wait for that.
So, we're trying to receive comments on 18973, the document submissions portion?
Yes.
That's separate from the annual reports section?
I'm sorry.
Which is coming later.
Does anyone have any comments on Section 18973, the process to submit documents to the department? Seeing none, we will move on to Section 18973.1. This section outlines the document review and approval process. Our next section that we will be covering starts on Page 5. This section covers the required components of a stewardship plan for covered drugs.
Hello again, James Jack, again on behalf of Little Drugstore Products and Convenience Valet. So, the two companies that we're here today representing are both members of PPSWG and various other jurisdictions where take-back programs have been created. And one suggestion that we would like to make to the department regarding this section is inherently, there is a natural desire within stewardship organizations to spread the cost of the program across as many entities as possible to reduce the overall burden to any particular entity with regard to the cost of administering the program. However, a situation will likely exist where members of the pharmaceutical supply chain who are not the covered entities could potentially be looked to for financial or program support through a stewardship organization, even if they are not defined under the regulation as the covered entity for that covered drug. And so, the clarification that we would request that I think would create a lot of uncertainty for smaller companies like the two that we represent is that participation in the stewardship group shall not be required unless you are a covered entity for a covered drug under the program.
Hey, Jason Schmelzer for CPSC and NSAC again. We would do Page 6, Line 21 and 22, where it's talking about creating a description for the process in which good-faith negotiations with potential authorized collectors is conducted. We would ask that there would be a separate process described for authorized collectors who request to join the program specifically under 42032.2B3 of the PRC. That's the provision that says, you know, once a plan has been approved and once the minimum convenience standard has been met, that any authorized collector, any valid authorized collector can request to join the med program and needs to be basically brought in within 90 days. This is an extremely important provision in the bill. This was kind of the balancer on meeting the convenience standard. There's a kind of a numerical convenience standard, and this was the stopgap to make sure that any holes were filled. So, we think that's a very important process, and we want to see that measured very specifically because to us, that's part of the convenience standard, is, you know, those requesters joining and how they're dealt with and processed. And we would kind of extend that further to say, if they're rejected for any reason once they've requested to join, we think the stewardship organization should have to provide an explanation as to why they were rejected.
Hey, good afternoon. My name is Mike Van Winkle. I'm the executive director of Med Project USA. Med Project USA was established by the Pharmaceutical Product Stewardship Work Group to develop, implement, and operate stewardship programs for unwanted pharmaceutical products and Sharps from households on behalf of the PPSWG members and producers. Med Project does have substantial on-the-ground experience across a number of jurisdictions in the country, including local jurisdictions here in California. We appreciate the opportunity to submit this testimony, and I do have one issue on this section I'd like to bring forward. And that, while we've provided substantial written comments, one of the things that we point out in this section is that CalRecycle should revise the regulations to recognize the appropriate program operator roles as contemplated on SB 212. To basically operate successful and compliant stewardship programs, program operators can support collection site and program vendor compliance, but they cannot ensure these independent entities comply with their independent legal obligations. You know, while program operators can describe processes to address certain critical collection site or service provider policy or procedure deviations, only government agencies can conclusively determine that collection services or service providers are non-compliance.
Hey, thank you. I'm going to try to find the line in the page. Jason Schmelzer on behalf of CPSC and NSAC again. Page 8, Line 23 to 26 on ordinance repeals. So, the coverage for the entire program, whether it's meds or Sharps, obviously, the program does not apply, and program operators, stewardship organizations, don't have to cover a county where there's an existing ordinance. But part of what we've set up in the bill is a process whereby a stewardship organization or a program operator can negotiate with a county with an ordinance to get them to repeal their ordinance and come into the statewide program, which I think is important. But to the extent that that happens, I think, and to the extent that you can, the regulations need to help control that process. Let me give you an example. Say there's a county with an existing local ordinance that has requirements that are higher than what's in the legislation. So they negotiate to repeal their ordinance and come into the statewide program, but there's conditions for that county. Yes, we will join the statewide program, but you have to provide us with this level of service for us to repeal the ordinance. Well, the ordinance repeal is going to be permanent. So, to the extent that CalRecycle can, we'd like to examine ways where that kind of deal, that negotiation, the conditions for leaving the local program and joining the statewide program are preserved. Program operators will change. Stewardship organizations may change. If a county negotiates with one program operator, but then they go away and a new operator comes in to run the program, are those negotiations going to carry forward? How does that process work? Because it won't happen if counties don't have certainty. And there obviously is some value to bringing everybody into one program as far as efficiency, et cetera. So, to the extent that the department can kind of help control that situation, we think it would be helpful.
Thank you for your comments. We will now move, oh, one more?
Jennifer Snyder on behalf of the California Retailers Association, National Association of Chain Drug Stores. Just want to make a note, this is relative to Section 18973.2, Paragraph G, I think it's 8. I don't know the exact line or page number because I just put that down. So it looks like it's Line 9, I think. So this has to do with collection site maintenance. And organizations I represent have turned in some written comments, but I just wanted to note this one in particular. For them, I think also, in our discussions with the Pharmacists Association, the independent pharmacies, there's a lot of concern about collection site maintenance and making sure that program operators that work with pharmacies effectively help them with collection site maintenance. And many of them have a lot of concerns about that their collection sites are not properly maintained. And they don't really have accessibility or know who to report that to, who to call. So we would look for stronger language in Paragraph 8 with respect to keeping program operators accountable for if we're going to have collection receptacles that they're properly maintained.
And to clarify for the hearing transcript, I believe you were commenting on Page 8, Lines 6 through 8.
Okay, we will now move on to Section 18973.3, starting on Page 9. This section covers the required components of a stewardship plan for home-generated Sharps waste.
Hey, Jason Schmelzer for CPSC and NSAC. Again, we just want to kind of double down on the comment that we made earlier about how important the issue of providing at the point of sale, providing or initiating distribution of the Sharps mail-back container at the point of sale is. The law is drafted very tightly to make sure that this occurs. So we just, paramount importance. Frankly, I think from a negotiating perspective, the folks that were for the program in the first place, we weren't really comfortable with the mail-back program, and that convenience factor, again, is really central. One thing that's not anticipated by the regulations but that we think would be helpful, when we were talking about the bill with the Sharps manufacturers, they said, hey, we may want to do, you know, a container for three months' worth of Sharps, you know, and not at every point of sale. Maybe we know somebody gets 30 a month, and we want to give them a container for 100 Sharps. We should be able to do that. How can you do that if you're supposed to give them something at the point of sale every time? So maybe the regulations should anticipate the program providing larger containers for multiple months or multiple purchases, and how they would kind of work that out. We would just say one thing, which is, you know, the containers need to be of suitable size and weight when they're full for consumers to actually be able to take them and carry them to an appropriate drop-off facility or take them to be mailed or what have you.
Seeing no other comments for Section 18973.3, we will move on to the next section, 18973.4. This section covers the required components of an annual report for covered drugs.
This is definitely the right time for me to talk, right? Thank you. And thank you for your patience. So, I won't go back all the way, but let me say what we're talking about is Page 17, Line 13.
Sorry, can you please state your name and affiliation again? Thanks.
I will start over again. My name is John Gay. I'm vice president for Legislative and Regulatory Affairs with PPSWG, the Pharmaceutical Product Stewardship Working Group. We appreciate the opportunity to give comments here. We have written comments as well. I will raise two points. First, we would like to support the comments submitted by Med Project. And secondly, to talk about the issue that I started to talk about earlier, which occurs on Page 17, Line 13. The concern is that the provisions in the proposed regulations could require the submission of updated, verified, or re-verified lists of covered products in annual reports contrary to what is required by SB 212. SB 212 requires that covered entities or stewardship organization SB 212 requires that covered entities or stewardship organization update and submit a list of covered products to the Board of Pharmacy on or before January 15th of each calendar year. SB 212 does not impose any new obligations on program operators during the annual reporting process, i.e. there's no obligation to prepare new, updated, or re-verified lists of covered products during the roughly two-and-a-half-month period between the January 15th Board of Pharmacy submission and the March 31st annual operating, or annual reporting deadline. Rather, the legislative intent was simply and only to require that the same covered products list submitted to the Board of Pharmacy on January 15th be included in the annual report submitted to CalRecycle on March 31st. However, the provision I mentioned, 18973.4J2 of the proposed regulation states, without further elaboration, that the annual report submitted to CalRecycle for covered drug stewardship plan must include, quote, "a list of covered products," unquote. As drafted, this language in the proposed regulations could be construed as imposing additional obligations on program operators to undertake another exercise in preparing a different, updated, or re-verified list of covered products included in the March 31st annual report submissions. Accordingly, we suggest that this provision of the proposed regulation should be revised to be consistent with SB 212. I have a similar one for the later, for the covered Sharps, but would you like me to wait for that one?
Yeah, we're aiming for a chronological sequence of comments, so thank you.
And John, thanks for your patience and indulgence here with us. We're putting your name and affiliation and your comments. It does help get an accurate transcript. Make sure we follow up. Thank you.
We will now move on to the next section, 18973.5. This section covers the required components of an annual report for home-generated Sharps waste.
Did I start the whole thing again?
You don't have to do the whole thing, but please identify yourself and the comments for this section.
I'm John Gay, Vice President of Legislative and Regulatory Affairs for PPSWG, the Pharmaceutical Product Stewardship Work Group. The issue we'd like to raise this time is on Page 20, Line 5, Section 18973.5K. Similar to what I mentioned earlier, this provision states that the annual reports for home-generated Sharps waste stewardship plan must include, quote, "updated," unquote, "updated list of covered products," unquote. So, as drafted, this language in the proposed regulations could be construed as imposing additional obligations on program operators to undertake another exercise in preparing a different, updated, and/or re-verified list of covered products to include the March 30, products to include in the March 31st annual report submission. Accordingly, we suggest that Section 18973.5K of the proposed regulation should be revised to be consistent with SB 212.
Jason Schmelzer, CPSC, NSAC. I guess in response, if I can, it seems like 42033.2B says that an annual report submitted shall include, at a minimum, all of the following. It seems like you guys have pretty broad authority to include other things that you think are important under that piece of language, so I would point that out. And then, second, Page 20, Line 13, on the local agency requests. Again, this was another really important piece with respect to the Sharps program. There was some discomfort with the mailback structure as opposed to a kiosk-based system. And so, the point of this is to catch any Sharps that fall through the cracks, so to speak, and end up at local government facilities. So, in the annual report, what we'd like to see is the language expanded, which we think you can do, to say that the annual report should include a specific list of the local jurisdictions that have requested either pickup or reimbursement under the law, the date of the request, the date of the response, and the ultimate disposition, what happened, and if for whatever reason the request was rejected, there should be an explanation as to why the request was rejected. So, we would ask that to be included.
Mike Van Winkle, again, Med Project, Med Project USA, Executive Director. So, in this section, 18973, it's a broad comment for this, and it probably does apply also back to the 18973.4, that the pharmaceutical and Sharps waste program was established by SB 212, is not a publicly funded, like other extended producer responsibility programs established by the legislature in California. And under SB 212, this stewardship program is wholly funded by the covered entities. This distinction was relevant to the legislature and should be honored in the proposed regulations. The amount of supplemental information and level of detailed oversight sought by CalRecycle in the annual reporting, and then also then in the following budget section, does not account for this private funding scheme, and is appears inconsistent with SB 212. So, we've got a number of comments on this, or refer to our written comments that we think should be revised for this distinction in line with the level of detail intended by the legislature.
Thank you for your comment. We will now move on to Section 18973.6, starting on Page 21. This section covers the required components of an initial and annual stewardship program budget.
I guess I can ask this question in the context of this section, but it actually kind of applies across the board to the regulations. On Page 21, Line 2, there's this reference to, you know, the first five calendar years of operation, you know, provide the budget for the first five years of operation. It seems like throughout the regulations, we're leaning towards a five-year plan, but it never says that. So, I guess I would just suggest if what CalRecycle is anticipating is kind of a long-term plan that's implemented over time, and there's a long-term budget and things like that, that maybe that'd just be called out very specifically in the regulations. Hey, here's going to be the duration of the plan. It would just give everybody more certainty as to what they're looking at, because looking at the regulations, I can't really tell if they could propose a three-year plan that has a, like, five-year funding structure. It's just a little bit unclear, so I'll just make a general comment about that.
Thank you for your comment. Seeing no further comments on the annual and initial stewardship program budget, we will move on to Section 18974, starting on Page 22. This section lists various record-keeping requirements. Seeing that there are no comments on this section, we will move on to 18974.1, starting on Page 23. This section covers the administrative fee paid to the department. With no comments on that section, we will move on to Section 18974.2. This section covers stewardship organization audits of covered entities or authorized collectors. With no comments on that section, we can move on to Section 18974.3. This section covers product verification requirements of retailers, wholesalers, and And we will move on to the next section, 18975, starting on Page 24. This section lists the criteria for imposing an administrative civil penalty.
Hey, Jason Schmelzer, CPSC, NSAC. I took my glasses off. Page 24, Line 7. So, I guess this is more of a general comment than what's in the regulations. The statute's pretty limited as far as the application of civil penalties. It's really only as you've described it in that paragraph. So, I think we would make a comment about your general enforcement posture, which is, there's a lot of other very important aspects to this program that can't be penalized through civil penalties. Rejecting local government requests for pickup would not be punishable under a civil penalty. That's not, that's not, that doesn't meet the test under the statute or the regulations. Failing to provide the Sharps container at the point-of-sale does not count for civil penalties, which means really your only recourse, if there are problems, which I actually don't suspect there will be, respectfully, I don't think there's going to be problems. But if there is, really, your only recourse is an aggressive policy related to repeal, suspension, revocation, whatever you want to call it, of the plan, then you can impose civil penalties. So, we would just suggest that if for whatever reason there are problems such as that on key provisions of the requirements under the law, the CalRecycle will take a very aggressive enforcement posture, because there have been other programs in the past that have floundered because of difficulty with enforcement, and this is one, obviously, that we really want to work very well. So, being as that you have limited tools, we would say, use them aggressively to the extent that you have to.
Thank you for your comment. We will move on to the next section, 18975.1, starting on Page 25. This section outlines the procedure for imposing an administrative civil penalty. Seeing no raised hands, we will move on to Section 18975.2. This section outlines the procedure for revoking a stewardship plan, requiring plan resubmital, or requiring additional reporting for failure to meet a material requirement of the statute.
Jason Schmelzer, CPSC, NSAC. Following up on my prior comment, this is where it might be a good idea to telegraph both to program operators and, you know, people who are going to be using the program, if there are certain things that will automatically trigger a revocation process. Again, you know, doing some of those big-ticket, or failing to do some of those big-ticket items in the bill, maybe if, maybe it doesn't belong here, I'm not sure, I'm not a regulator, but maybe the regulations could anticipate certain offenses, we're going to move straight to revocation, we're not messing around, very strict enforcement posture. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Are there any other comments on this section?
Okay, Joyce, did we get any additional logistical questions online?
No, we did not receive any comments or comment letters during this hearing.
Okay, thank you, Joyce. So, before we conclude, are there any other general comments that didn't fit the sequence that we just went through?
Mike Van Winkle, Executive Director of Med Project USA. And thanks for the opportunity to comment. So, as I think we brought up before, and as certainly in our written comments and many detailed discussion, SB 212 is a very detailed and prescriptive statute, and the proposed regulations build on this already detailed framework, and in many ways, adding new requirements, in other ways, creating some inconsistent obligations or ambiguities where conflicting readings are potentially possible. And a full list of these additions and inconsistencies, ambiguities are included in our written comments, and our request is that these should be eliminated, preserve the language and intent of SB 212 to maintain its flexibility, which in turn will promote a successful program operation. And thank you again for Med Project's ability to provide comments.
Okay, thank you all for your comments today on the proposed regulations. Once again, please direct any questions to pharmasharps@calrecycle.ca.gov, and subscribe to our listserv for updates on the rulemaking process. This concludes our formal hearing today, so thanks, everybody, and have a great afternoon.